Okay, we're going to call a meeting to order. This is our January 25th, 2022 Committee of the Whole Meeting via Zoom. Going to record that we have regrets from Councillor Calvin Don'trum. Can we have, has everybody had the chance to look at the agenda? Any errors or omissions? Councillor Saret?
So move, we accept the agenda.
Thank you. Do we have a second there? Thank you, Warden Muse. Questions on that? All those in favor signify by saying I or raising your hand. Contrary, motion carried. Number three, we have a presentation tonight from Daryl LeBlanc from the West Publico Golf Course. And there's attachment, an attachment of six pages. Daryl, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. First of all, thanks, everybody, for allowing me to do this. I appreciate it. You all know who I am. My name's Daryl LeBlanc. I am the president at the West Publico Golf Club Association. What I have tonight is a presentation that we want to put forward, but it's, it's one that I guess that's really open. Because what we'd really like to do, we're trying to figure out, I guess, of what the plans are over the next five to 10 years and how we're going to achieve the things we want to achieve. And we wanted to bring this forward to council to get their thoughts and see what type of partnership or that we can arrange with council in regards to getting some type of support. So I did a write-up, which I sent out to everybody. And I guess the best way to do it is, I'll go ahead and read that and then answer any questions and elaborate further in regards to what we have. So why are we here? Well, we're here, although financially, the golf course has been doing well, especially since we moved over to an association. We do recognize that over the next five to 10 years, there's going to be some significant capital costs that are going to be facing us. We have a clubhouse that's going to be requiring some major repairs down the road. And we have equipment that's going to have to be purchased. Now, right now, financially, we're probably in good shape. We actually did very well this year. We, you know, we're probably in the best financial shape that we've been. However, we don't feel the way that things are right now, that we are going to have the financial resources available to handle both replacing equipment and doing some major renovations or repairs in regards to the clubhouse. So we need to start looking at how we're going to achieve that. What is the request? Well, what we'd like to do is get some type of commitment from council. Does not have to be this year, but it does need to be that, I guess, to put it on the radar to see what type of that council has in regards to working with us on this. We feel as an operating golf course that we can certainly take care of the operating expenses and the wages of the employees and everything that's needed. And we also feel that on a financial basis, we can handle taking on replacing the equipment that is required. We have not replaced equipment in the last seven years. We have refurbished our golf carts, but they are getting to an end-of-life cycle. Our tractors and mowers, again, we bought new seven years ago and we've maintained them very well. But again, they're getting to the point that they're going to have to be replaced. The clubhouse, we have a clubhouse that was built around, I believe, 1999 or 2000. We're 22 years into it. There's been no major renovations or any major repairs that have been done onto the clubhouse. So we have a roof that's going to have to get done. Windows and doors are going to have to be replaced. Flooring, the deck is going to have to have some major repairs on. And again, and there's other things that would be required as well down the road. How can the municipality help? Well, we have what we feel is a major asset in the municipality of Virgile. Land-wise, we have probably the largest recreational complex in the municipality of Virgile. I, although we are a golf course primarily, the board feels that we have so much more to offer than just being a golf course. And so obviously, we need to operate as a golf course because that is where we generate our income and our money to do the things that we do. However, we have periods of time throughout the year and certainly over the winter area where we're totally shut down. So what we would like to do is to have some type of commitment from the municipality at some point. And we can negotiate in regards to working out formulas on how that's doing. But to receive some type of financial commitment to go towards capital projects. Example, the clubhouse repairs on an annual basis. This can be in conjunction with matching dollar for dollar based on what we put up compared to the municipality. There could be covenants in there in regards to, you know, if the club, if the golf course makes a certain amount of profit, then there's no, you know, financial contribution for the municipality. And again, that stuff can be worked out and we can discuss that. By, by doing this, what we feel we have is a recreational facility that we can open up then certainly to the municipality and to the Recreation Department to be using our facilities for certain things throughout the wintertime or even during the summer, using the clubhouse for certain activities. I put a list in regards to our presentation on some of the things that we could, you know, I guess, look at. But I mean, there's, you know, you, we could be doing, you know, hikes on the golf course, snow shoeing, cross-country skiing. There could be winter hiking, winter camping. You could be using the clubhouse for yoga classes or art classes or using them for seniors to put on game nights. Teens to have, you know, from the schools to have, you know, if they're looking for teen activities on the weekends or things in that regard. We're prepared to do that and we're prepared to do that at no cost to the municipality or to any group that is an association that's part of the municipality to use that facility. And that would be, I guess, our contribution coming back in regards to receiving the financial contributions from the municipality of Virgile. When you look at the financial report that I sent you, it is not our financial statements. That is a, it is up to our year-end of December 31st. And it does show that we had a very good year profit-wise, which we did. And it does show that we have, one thing I want to point out, it does show that we had at that point $33,000 sitting in the account and we had a $20,000 GIC. What you have to be aware of, however, is that we did receive the $60,000 CBA loan from the federal government. So the $20,000 is 20 that we set aside because 40,000 of that CBA loan has to be paid back. The federal government just announced that they extended it an extra year, so that's going to give us an extra year. But we did budget to put 20 aside this last year and we were going to put 20 aside this year to cover that. Also, after the October 31st, we did have some additional accounts payables that had to be paid. So, but again, we are sitting in a position of where we, we have approximately the $20,000 term deposit. And as of today, around $13,000 sitting in the account to look at starting the new year up. We have put new heat pumps into the facility. So now throughout the summer, we have air conditioning and we're able to maintain a much better heat throughout the winter as well, in which has reduced our costs. Other than that, that is really what we are looking for. And it's, it's, you know, whether, whether something the municipality can do or want to do or not do, that is fine. It's just that we need to know, I guess, as an organization, that if, as we start planning on what we need to do going forward, if, you know, if we do have some form of, I guess, commitment is the word I'm looking for from the municipality on an annual basis over a specific period of time. Yeah, so with that, I will leave it to you guys if you have any questions.
Thank you, Daryl. Go ahead, Councillor Saret.
Daryl, on that 40,000 CBA loan, I don't should have graduated the Curb. And that was 10,000 forgivable. Are you, are you under that 10,000 forgivable?
Yeah, actually, that's, that's correct. So they increased it to 60,000. So it went from 40 to 60. There was an additional 20. And 20 of it's forgivable. And so we, we received the 60. And so obviously, that's certainly showing in our bank account by that. And there's 40 that has to be paid back. We have 20,000 of that set aside right now. And we, it was supposed to be done by December 31st, 2022. The feds announced last week they extended it an extra year, so we have till December 31st, 2023 to pay that back. So we're going to keep that 20 there. And that's, that's an additional 10,000 over the next two years each year that we would have to put towards it to cover that.
Thank you, Daryl.
You're welcome.
Warden Muse?
Yeah, Daryl. When it comes to renovations or capital for on your building, and I don't know about equipment, is there anything that the federal or provincial government, they get grants? You're, I'm sure you're aware of that. And is that something that you guys are looking at as well?
Um, yeah, actually, we are. And, and these are the things. And that's why I said, like, what, I think the idea behind here tonight was to put this out there and to put it on the radar with the municipality that this is what we're looking at and these are the things. Now, we're going to be attempting some fundraising. We have tried that in the past. It hasn't gone. So we, we just had a board meeting and we're going to be looking at doing all the fundraising we possibly can. Problem we run into is, again, is volunteers of trying to get people out to do the fundraising and to help in regards to it. And so, you know, we're very limited in that way and it's unfortunate, but it's just the reality of it. And so, you know, honestly, I hope we're to a point that, you know, down the road, we're able to have very good financial years and we're able to do enough fundraising that we don't need any, you know, financial help at all in regards to doing this. But I don't want to leave it to that point that if down the road, we don't, we're not able to do this, then what are we going to do? Right? And so it's, I, I think it's, it was really important to put this in front of council to, to, I guess, two reasons. One, to let you know that, that this is what's taking place. But secondly, and more importantly, I really want to get across that I, we don't feel that we're just a golf course now. And I think we have the ability that, yes, being a golf course is our primary, I guess, goal or whatever it is. But we do have the ability to use this facility, especially through the wintertime or even at different nights, to help, I guess, in regards to, to with the municipality and different organizations and to be able to utilize what we have, you know, to its full potential.
Go ahead, Ted. Councillor Sonya?
Thank you. Hi, Daryl.
Hi, Ted.
Daryl, you have talked about this a bit before. So your membership is down, am I correct?
That, that is correct. Yeah, we're, we're to 168 members right now. And that includes, that's everybody. That's, that's men, women, youth. Is where we're at. It's been holding at that for the last couple of years. One of the things that, that, that we have found, and, and I mean, I know that golfing is right now, especially in Yarmouth and in River Hills, they're, they're having fantastic years. They're, they're, they have a lot of golf going on there. And I, I don't want to use the word unfortunately, but you know, down our way, there seems to be other activities that, that we don't have the golfers out like we used to. We still have people coming and we, our green fees have been really great. If you look at our report, our green fees and our tournament fees, we've done really well on. And that's, that's, that's really free money. But membership is down. And with membership being down in that regard, then, you know, it, it's, we don't have the bodies to volunteer. We don't have the bodies to be able to do other things, you know, that, that would, would certainly help us.
So, so Daryl, with, with the membership down, would it be fair to say if you could bring it up to where you'd like to? And we're not going to go to the stars here, I'm sure. But would it be fair to say that it would make your, your golf course self-sufficient, so to speak? And if so, if so, what do you have in terms of recruitment? Are you pretty confident you can get the membership up?
So, yes, so there's, there's a couple of things that we have going on. So that we're trying to build on the membership. So one, we offer free, free membership to children. So kids 12 and under have a free membership to the golf course. I've been working actually with Scott and Nat and our clubhouse manager, Bobby has as well. And we just receiving some grant money. We're going to be purchasing summers around 15 sets of junior golf clubs. And we'll be putting on some junior clinics to, to try to build up our junior ranks as well. So that's, that's one thing. Second thing, which we started last year and it actually increased our female membership. We were really concerned on the amount of females that were playing, which were very low. So we actually offered a special for female golfers last year, which they received a reduced rate membership. And we actually increased our membership there doing that. And that was, you know, for two reasons. One, it was to promote women's golf. And, and second was to try to bring in more female golfers to, to, and into the golf course and hopefully get new people golfing and expand on that. We're looking to continue that this year again, is we're looking to, you know, offer, offer that special again for the, the female golfers and to continue to try to build on that segment of the membership as well. Thank you.
Were there any other questions or comments for Daryl? Okay, seeing none. So my understanding, Daryl, is you, you kind of wanted us to put this on our radar. So it's, it's not necessarily something we need to make a decision on right now, but it's something we would like for our council to take under consideration.
Yes. And, and, and again, and we're prepared to sit down with council and, you know, work out that if something, if this is something that interests council, we're prepared to sit down and try to work out something that is going to work for both of us in that regard. We're, we're very open in regards to doing that.
Thank you so much. If there's nothing else, thank you very much for your presentation. It was really informative. We appreciate you coming and taking the time.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
See you now.
Bye. Okay. Moving on, next we have the adoption of minutes. So for A, we have the Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes, November 23rd, 2021. Is there somebody willing to move those minutes? Thank you, Warden Muse, seconded by Councillor Bork. Questions on those minutes? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Contrary, motion carried. Next set of minutes, for B, regular council meeting minutes from January 13th, 2022. Moved by Councillor Digtin, seconded by Councillor Sonya. Any questions on those minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying I or raising your hand. Contrary, motion carried. Thank you. Next, we have number five, business arising from the minutes. Letter sent to Shift House regarding coldest night of the year sponsorship. So I'm assuming that we just sent a letter. There's no attachment. That's what I'm assuming. It's there for information. Okay? Anything on that? Anybody want to speak to that? All right, let's go to 7B. Letter sent to the Minister of Public Works regarding Rockaway Road. Again, another letter sent. And if you saw, our MLA Colton LeBlanc had posted it and I shared it. They're actually going to be doing some work on that road. So that's good. I know that's some good news for a lot of residents, definitely. See, it doesn't hurt. We always wonder if these letters make any kind of difference, right? I don't think it hurts for us to send them. Next, we have the financial report, number six. All right, welcome, Marcia. You're on. Oh, sorry, Ted. Councillor Sonya, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you. On business arising from the minutes, I'd just like to mention the West Publico Lift Pump. I just have a couple of questions and comments. These pumps, I, I had questions last week, but quite didn't know for sure exactly how many I would have. So anyhow, since, since then, basically, my concern is if one pump is failing, maybe the others are on the verge of failing as well. And how many, I'd like to know how many pumps there is. And can these pumps be refurbished or rebuilt? Most, most pumps come in two sections, so to speak, the pump itself and the electric motor. And I'm wondering to save costs, if that's a possibility. I'm just looking at the amount of pumps that there is. There may be a way to curb expenses. And I, I just think that if, if one's failing at $10,000 a pop, it's a concern of mine.
Yeah, absolutely. There's, I believe there's six of the 10 horsepower ones there, the high expense one. I think it'd be more about upkeep than it is refurbishing. I think once they're quit, they're beyond life. If we had a couple of spares that we could swap in and out on a regular basis on a maintenance plan to pull them and maintain them better, then I think we may be able to prolong the life a little bit more. But yeah, this is a concern. This is a, we're talking about $10 million of infrastructure down there with the piping, the lift stations, the treatment plants. If, there's going to be an expense to maintain it, unfortunately, and that's, that's just the reality of it. But yeah, I think that there, there is better maintenance to be done. But in saying that, we need to get the assets to get the spare pumps there or the extra pumps to do the proper maintenance for the pumps that are there now. So there's, there's a, it's a, there's a big plan that's going to be put in place prior to this, this happening. There has to be some money spent on assets.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make a note of that. I thought that, you know, all these pumps, let, coming down or failing at the same time or one after the other might be an issue. And that if, if there's any way that, that anybody could get something, like you said, like I said, refurbished or something. So, yeah.
Yeah. My plan is to start to get some spares on hand, but that's, that's going to come with future budgets. The budgets I inherited didn't have allowance for that, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, Marcia, financial report.
Thank you. So attached to the agenda is the financial report to December 31st, 2021, showing a surplus of $292,019, nine months throughout the fiscal year. As in the past, at the end of each quarter, we include the full report, which you see enclosed. And I will go through some of the larger variances at a high level. But first, I just wanted to bring your attention to page one of the report. There's two line items. One is the de-transfer tax, which is already at $173,354 over the prorated budget number. And the second is under conditional transfers from provincial government, which is sitting at $116,189 over the prorated budget. This, this line item here is the municipal finance capacity grant, formerly known as the equalization grant. So as I stated in October, this is the platform commitment by the new government to double this grant until the new memorandum of understanding was negotiated. So these two line, line items combined make up $289,543,000 of your surplus. So I just kind of wanted to highlight that first, but I will also continue to go through the completed, the full budget. So on page four, basically, the only line item there is the de-transfer tax already that I just discussed. Page five, other local governments, you will see a negative 8143 there for the remote. Basically, remote is money in, money out. So the expenses are also lowered and budgeted. So that's why that number looks like it's that we're not getting as much revenue, but it's, we just go by whatever the expenses are at the time. Licenses and permits, building permits are significantly higher. They are, yeah, they're significantly higher. And sorry, I have a phone ringing at the same time from the municipal office. Sorry. Okay, so, yeah, so the building permits are higher. Other than that, that's fine. Page six, as discussed, the municipal finance capacity grant. The only thing, other thing I want to bring for the revenues is the, on page seven, you will see transfer from operating reserve. We had budgeted $160,526. I put that currently at zero. We already have a surplus showing projected surplus now. So I don't see us having to bring in any operating reserves at this time. Page eight, in the expenses, you will see in under administration, there are some line items that look like they're, you know, above what we've budgeted. Basically, these are expensive that have overlapped from one building to the next. We still have certain expenses in the old building, like having to keep the power on and the heat on and stuff like that. So that's why there's a few line items there that look like they're over budget. It was just the overlap from one building to the next. If you go to page 10, under fire protection, their training programs are relatively under budget due to COVID. I'm assuming that some of these things have not happened. I am anticipating a little bit more, but I have not talked to the one, the person in charge, who's Al Woodrow. I haven't talked to him, but I will be in touch with him just to be sure, just to see if they're going to have any. But due to COVID, everything's kind of locked down at this point. Other protection, I just wanted to point out other protection in, under public works. You will see a line item that's over budgeted. We hadn't projected any budget for an assistant to the director. We had moved all of that under the fire inspection because that person was doing both at the time. That person has now moved on. So we just, it's basically in and out, basically moving from one line item to the next to get the positions basically just named properly for the future. Under environmental health, West Publico Sewer, you'll also see that the, the very last one for the West Publico Sewer, we hired a new wastewater operator. So his salary was not projected at the time as he was only hired after the budget was set. And the municipal innovation planning on page 14, you'll see those are currently sitting at zero. There was also a revenue to offset that, that was at zero. This project's actually been passed over to the municipality of Barrington in RCAO's absence. So that's why it's showing zero on both sides in our budget. Senior safety, it looks like they're over budget as well. Basically, we get a revenue coming in. So I just added these line items. Senior safety used to be managed by the RCMP or something to do with the RCMP. And now they, they basically fund, they give the funds to us and we manage it on our own. So I just created extra line items after the budget had been passed. But we do get a revenue to offset a lot of these costs. Recreation services are showing a surplus. As usual with recreation, it's always hard to, to, to project what, you know, especially with COVID. And now they're currently shut down again and not able to do a lot of their programs that they had planned last spring. Therefore, I'm totally anticipating a surplus in that one. So other than that, it's basically pretty straightforward, but I would invite any questions if anybody was to have any.
You? Are there any questions for Marcia? Councillor Saret?
Not really a question, Marcia, but just a comment, just to let you know that you stole my thunder on that $116,000 and $173,000 that's on the, on the de-transfer in the other one there. Yeah, that, it, from looking at, Marcia, just maybe a question, looking at our surplus, do you think we can maintain that till the end of the year? Or there's some, there's stuff to come in that might chew on that surplus we got so far?
I mean, I do anticipate some more, some, you know, some costs coming in. However, with the de-transfer tax, we're basically going to continue. We still have three months of de-transfer tax, so I totally anticipate that one going up. The, the other one, the municipal finance capacity grant, we, we've got double and we've received all that money. However, I, I don't anticipate any major expenses that we haven't projected or haven't anticipated. However, with sewers and stuff, you, you never know. But I do, I do anticipate a surplus. But I do, I do anticipate a surplus at the end of the year due to these two line items.
Madam Chair, if I may, Kyle and Marcia, thank you so much for bringing this financial report up. I know you've got a lot of stuff on the go. I'm not there, but it means a lot to be able to see these numbers. And thank you so much for bringing them at this meeting.
You're welcome. Any other questions for Marcia? Do you have any updates on the status of the FCM loan, anything that you can report there?
Yes, I did finally get everything into them. And I think I got everything. We had some signs that were delayed and some pictures that had to be uploaded and stuff. And the last I heard from them is that usually it takes two months, but that this project's been ongoing. They've had a lot of the information, so he was hoping it wouldn't be that long. So I will definitely send you guys an email if it's not in meeting times or financial reporting time. I will definitely send you an email when we do receive it.
Sounds good. Thank you, Marcia. Councilor Donaldson?
Yes, Marcia, not pertaining to this budget, but do you know yet how much assessment it's gone up, like percentage wise for the whole municipality?
Yep, let me just double check. Our percentage for residential has gone up about, well, without the cap, it was like 8.2. With the cap, it's like 5.4% for residential. And commercial is at five points. It's basically kind of the same five, or so the average, yeah.
Can you, like, there's been a lot of chatter on Facebook where people have received their assessments. Can you translate that 5.4% into dollars? Like, how much will that generate extra?
I have it here. Just give me a quick second. I can either look for it now or I can send it to you guys in an email. I think it was basically, Kyle, I had given that to you. I had done that report for you, but I'm not at work and I haven't had my stuff. Just give me a quick second here.
And maybe while we wait on that, I'm sure you have all had questions about why there was such an increase. I know I've had some people reach out and asking why there was a big increase. Kyle, could you give that explanation that you gave to me? In general, I guess?
Yeah, so there was a pretty good blanket increase, I believe, in the area. It's based on, it's based on two things. It's based on sale prices and it's based on building permits pulled. They reassess any house that a building permit has been pulled on, and they reassess any house that has a sale on it. So I think at the last court meeting, we talked about there was 273 building permits, I believe, pulled in the municipality this year. That's a lot. So that's a lot of reassessments happening with drive-bys or whatever by our third-party evaluator, PVFC. And then the sale prices are up. They're up in the region a lot more than 8.2%. And I think we're in for this for a couple of years for these hikes, unfortunately. And it's not us that decides them. It's PVSC who's third-party and they do the province and we have to live with it. So I think we are, we're only halfway there right now, unfortunately, because the prices are up a lot more than 8.2% in the region.
Okay, so I've just did a very quick, so don't quote me on this one, but a very quick calculation, and it's about 400,000 added revenue that we'll get. Now, just take, keep in mind, it's because of the cap. So had the cap, you know, if the cap wasn't there, it would be a little bit different.
If I may, right quickly, that essentially is going to match what we're going to pay out in cost and inflation as well for municipality for different, to provide different services. Our cost of stuff is going to go up with that. I don't see that being an added 400,000 to the surplus. Our cost of operations are going to go up as well, just with the cost of everything right now. So I think that it's very reflective of that and it should match up pretty well with those rising costs.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, is there somebody who would be willing to make a motion to move the financial report? Thank you, Councilor Bork, seconded by Councilor Saret. Any questions? Okay, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Contrary, motion carried. Thank you, Marcia, and thank you, Kyle, too, for answering those questions on the fly.
Thank you.
Next, we have, under four decision, we don't have anything for decision. Number eight, we have correspondence and for information. There are two letters under correspondence and for information. The first one is a letter from our MLA, Colton LeBlanc. He is wishing to meet with council, as we do, we tend to do that, meet with the MLAs. Do we have a date that we'd like to set that? How would, go ahead, Scott?
I can confirm that he has confirmed that he's available at the next regular meeting, I think February the 8th. So I hope that we can make that work. My thoughts are we could kind of send circulated an email with, to council just to get some agenda items so that we can all get prepared. The MLA can get prepared and you guys can get prepared in advance. But he has confirmed that he's available at the next regular meeting.
Perfect. That's, that works perfectly because we're there anyway. Thank you, Scott. Okay, that was easy. Next, we have the Bell signed contract. There's an attachment of eight pages there. Did you want to speak on that, Scott?
Yeah, that's me again, I guess. That has to do with the high-speed internet expansion project that you guys are well aware of more than I am, actually. But what I understand is that there was, it was basically a three-phase approach. The first phase did not involve the municipality of Argos, or we weren't involved in that. The second phase, a lot of the work were being done in Argos. And you guys signed the contract back in March of last year, a contract with Bell for $669,375. $669,000, I should say, 375. And yeah, so we signed that to do the setup of the broadband across the municipality, which was approximately 2,500 household that they would reach. So what you see in front of you is actually like the third phase, which is a very similar contract that you signed in March. But basically what it's doing, it's filling a gap that the phase two missed. So, and if you look at the last page of that contract, it does talk about the gap that was missing is Belleville South. So, and the contract is only for $5,000. It's just a little piece compared to the one you signed in March. But it's only going to affect, you know, 10 households. So at the end of the day, this is just for information purposes because I think the officer of the CAO can really sign that off and send it. But I thought it was important that you guys knew about it, so.
Okay, thank you. Warden Muse, did you have a question?
No, not on this. If somebody has questions on that, go ahead. I just had a letter today that I want to bring up.
Okay.
When we're done with the other letters, that's all.
Okay. Any questions for, for Scott on this? Okay, seeing none, go ahead, Warden Muse.
Okay, I received a letter today. Well, I received a phone call first from Neil McKenzie. And what it is, is they're, they are going to be, yes, that's going to be, they're going to be hosting a curling tournament that's coming up, and it's the seniors, men and women. And that's going to happen in December, December 5th to the, whatever, 5th to the 10th or something in that vicinity, anyway. And they will be coming to us for some funding on that. He kind of gave, in the letter, he gives us a breakdown, funding breakdown. And what they will be looking at is like $10,000 per yes, the partner. So this is not something we have to decide now. But it's just that they wanted a heads up. And while we're doing the budgeting, he'll be, they'll be looking for a commitment from the different units. He said that if we're, if we're up to it, if we feel better, he can come give us a presentation prior to that at some point. So, and that may not be a bad idea. I like, I like, you know, we can hear what the tournament's going to be about. I mean, he's going to bring about 150, 130 athletes plus 15 officials. And so anyway, he kind of compared that to the 55-plus games that we hosted as well. And so anyway, just wanted to bring that up so that you're aware. And probably we're going to have a presentation. Or if we don't want a presentation, we can go with this. But at this point, it's just for information. But we have to keep in mind that when we do our budget, that maybe we're going to have to look at this as well.
Did he mention any dates for presentation, Warden Muse?
No, he didn't know. He said, he didn't, what he said was, he was going to send this letter, and he says, if you feel better with having a presentation, then he's willing to come and do a presentation. I can send this letter, I can, what I can do is I can forward this letter to all counselors, if you want, and then we can look at it and take it from there.
Sure. Councilor Saret, did you have a question?
Yeah, Danny, I guess you beat me to it. Could we get that letter circulated, please?
Yes, I will, I will. And this, the letter is signed by Calvin, by the way, by Neil and Calvin, Calvin being the chair of the Armored and Caden Shores. So this letter would have already gone to Calvin. And it, and I see he included Alan on this as well, so on the letter, so.
Thank you. Councilor Digdon?
Thank you. I have a question that was sort of coincide with the Bell, the signed contract, and that we see these trucks around putting up the wires and all that. And it seems to be all over the place as far as when people are actually going to have high-speed internet going to their homes and their businesses and that. And I've been getting a lot of calls and people asking me, and I don't know. And I would hope that a company the size of Bell that's coming on with this fiber op would have an idea as to when these people can look forward to being hooked up. And of course, we know now in this world that we live in, everything is high-speed and having to do a lot of stuff on the computers, right up to the people now taking courses and they're doing their education on computers and that. And I was wondering, and I would make it into a motion, if need be, that we write Bell a letter and ask them when the areas down this way in this municipality can look forward to being hooked up at high speed.
Kyle?
Take that. So they do have their website, I think we had shared at the last meeting. I can articulate that to you guys. That has been updated even since the last meeting. I have been keeping an eye on that. So I think a letter is going to get the same response that that website is telling us. I assume that they're facing a lot of the challenges that's, obviously, when I'm dealing with public work stuff, I can see the challenges of supply chain and getting stuff and getting skilled workers as well. It's a tough, tough gig right now. So I think they're probably fighting a lot of those battles, but the updates are there on the website. I believe a lot of your area is right now showing March of 2022 in the update. But there is that website, and I'll make sure that we get that articulated to you guys as well. We absolutely can drop the letter, but I think that we're going to get the response that's going to coincide with the website being updated fairly regularly.
So if we sent a letter, basically what you're saying is we get the same information as what's on the website?
I think for the resources used, I don't think we're going to gain, but I'm, I'm, I'm capable to do that if you wish.
And you're going to circulate that website to us again? Yeah, I do recall. So what do we want to do with that? Do we want to just check, check the website, Councilor Digdon? What are you thinking?
That's fair for now. We'll keep checking the website. And maybe have an update every now and then when it does, like when the, when the website changes and that have the update on our website or whatever municipalities' website. So people can see this and something that we can put forward to them when we're asked these questions. Thank you.
We can even have that on our Facebook page. We can link that website to our Facebook page for information to the public as well. I'll talk to Scott and we'll get that dealt with.
That's a good idea. Councilor Saret, if you want to say something?
Glenn, I was speaking to Doren Evan Nemeth. He's the lead on this, on this fiber op with Bell and everything. And he basically told, I asked him how things were going, what our days were for down the Sretz Island, Morris Island. And he told me exactly what Kyle said. Called to the site and he said, that's your best way to know what's going on. He said, I don't have any further information than that. So like Kyle said, if you can circulate that, that would be great.
That's fair. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Councilor Donaldson?
This is a question for you, Nicole. Your district of Quinnon and that area was one of the first places in this end of the municipality that they started pre-trimming and laying wires and fiber op and whatever they do. Have they started hooking up people in the Quinnon area?
Not that I'm aware. I haven't heard anything. Nobody has kind of reached out to me. But I either haven't, you know, I haven't reached out either. But typically, people will let me know when good things happen. So I haven't heard anything and I think that that would be something people would reach out about.
Yeah, because they were, they were laying wire back in September up there.
When school started.
I feel with, I feel with an email from that area this week. I went to the website, checked it, and that is also showing March of 2022. I updated the resident and gave them the link to the website and all that stuff as well. But so that area is in the same mode as everybody else right now. It seems, things are having terminate, issues with getting the terminations now. I think a lot of the wires are rotten, getting the termination spots in houses.
Rumor, but I heard you're having trouble getting the fiber op wire. So whether that's true or not, I don't know.
Go ahead, Councilor Digdon. I saw you had your hand.
Thank you. If I may, the only thing I'd like to say is for the field workers that are out there, they're doing great. There's days that they're out there when it's very cold and the rain and wet, and they're up there trimming trees and up putting on lines and that, up on the poles and all that. So the field workers are really going above and beyond and traffic control and that is great. So, yeah, just kudos to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we are moving on. There are no financial requests. Number 10, do we have any agenda topics for the next meeting or notice of motion by counselors? Okay, seeing none? Is there anything, question period? Nothing?
There, Madam Chair?
Yes?
There is one question on Facebook. Someone's asking if the pumps can be rebuilt or not.
Yeah, go ahead, Kyle. I can't answer that.
So yeah, depending on the problem, I guess. I think the bigger issue here is the lack of ability to do proper maintenance on them. I think the long-term goal is that at the Tuskegee Plant, they're smaller pumps. They're less expensive pumps. We have spares. We pull them on a regular basis. We provide the maintenance to them. We have a lot less issue. Publical are more expensive to have on the shelf. It's just never been done in the past, and I think that maintenance is going to be a big thing. But yeah, depending on what's wrong with them, they can generally be rebuilt to some extent.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have our in-camera portion. So we have a couple of items to discuss in camera this evening. Can I have a motion to go in camera, please? Moved by Councilor Bork, seconded by Councilor Sonya. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Contrary, motion carried. All right, we will go in camera.